Mine says six thirty.
Mine says six thirty.
Now it says six thirty. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Click, would you please determine a quorum?
Before we stand.
Before we send it.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven present and zero absent, so we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Thank you all for attending this evening, even the hecklers up here with me. You're all welcome. We'll begin this evening with our approval of the agenda. I would like to modify the agenda briefly to remove item B1 from the agenda. This is not something that, this was the architect agreement that we'll be signing at some point with the INS group, but it has not yet been reviewed fully by our attorneys and so the administration didn't feel ready at this time to recommend it to us and I think that was the recommendation by the Finance Committee as well. So since we're not considering it, I thought let's just remove it from the agenda so we don't have to table it or deal with it later on. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of item 8B1.
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. That brings us to community comment time. So this is a time for any member of the community to come forward and share any thoughts or concerns with the school board. There's a limit of three minutes, three minutes per speaker and fifteen minutes limit, fifteen minute limit per topic. Are there any community comments at this time? For those who are new to the meeting, just so you know, I always prolong the awkward silence. Just making sure. Okay, seeing no community comment at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item four in our agenda, I'm sorry, item five in the agenda. The consent agenda is all taken actions taken in one motion. There is no discussion of these items. But any board member can choose to remove an item from the consent agenda to have it discussed simply by requesting it. Are there any requests to remove items? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. There is no discussion. Mr. Click, would you please do a roll call?
I will vote aye, Tom Casper.
Aye.
Deb Davis.
Aye.
Vett Martholler.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
And Chairman Ingraham.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is seven in favor, zero against.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Click. This brings us quickly to item number six, the Curriculum Committee. No report this, this week, the Curriculum Committee has not met. Although, could I ask when the next meeting is for the Curriculum Committee?
September twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay.
September twenty-second.
Thank you, Kathy, appreciate that.
Yeah. Four thirty P M.
At four thirty at the-
District office.
District office. Is that a Monday?
Yes. It's the school board Monday. That's how they usually plan.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And that brings us to technology update.
Good evening. I'm happy to report this morning our staff came back to school. We were very excited to see them and they had their iPads in hand. This afternoon, we had a speaker, Mark Bogley, from the University of Minnesota, speaking on social class and poverty. At the same time as he was speaking, our staff was using a back channel called Today's Meet, kind of a chatroom type situation, to comment and ask questions on the presentation. And it went very well. We had some, some really interesting comments and questions that we'll be addressing and it was just exciting to see how they used it and as a tool. Kind of teaching them how they can use it with our kids and also kind of helping us to move, move that discussion along through the poverty speaker. So it was, it was really neat. And so that's our, our technology update for today.
All right, this brings us to Policy Committee, item number seven. You have the minutes from the August twelfth meeting. Is there anything the Policy Committee wants to say before we, I guess there's just one item to look at. Is there any comment before we just move on to that item?
It was really interesting meeting.
Went really fast.
Yeah. I was the only person there besides Todd and Kathy.
All right, so in front of us then is item seven B, number one, policy nine oh five, advertising. This came out of a discussion we had at our last work session in which it was requested of the board to get feedback on whether or not we would be supportive of, of going forward with new billboards and paying for those by selling advertising on the billboards themselves. The general sense, as I had it from the room, was that we would be supportive of that type of thing, but that perhaps at this time would be an appropriate time to look at what our policies say about advertising and, and to think about that through before we, we, other items come up that might be more questionable to us. And so as I understand it, there was no policy in place towards advertising in this district. Policy nine oh five is a policy that came from MSBA. And so it's in front of you this evening for a potential first reading. And so I'll open that up to any discussion or, or questions about that policy.
Why does it say the school board may approve? Explain that, so meaning we may or may not, or we are maybe given the option of approving?
You always have an option of approving or dis, or not approving a policy.
But the intent is that if it's going to be on facilities or property, we would make sure to approve it or not.
Yeah, it's just, a policy is there to protect the district and so after looking at the policies, we try to make sure that by following the policy, in this case advertising, by following the proper protocol and having the board approve that, that gives us a little bit more protection for the school district if something does happen.
Could somebody explain, hey, paragraph B, the last sentence?
Oh, yeah, that's, you're not supposed to have any sort of advertisement within a hundred feet of a school building. And that I am familiar with what, from other districts, is that you have to make sure, and it can be anything. It doesn't have to be just advertising. You can't have any sort of signage or anything like that within a hundred feet of a, a school building. And the reason for that is because of the traffic and people look at it, they think it's a distraction. And so because we have students that are close by, they don't want any accidents to occur as a result of it. But that's all that is.
Jason.
Yes, please.
Would an advertisement be allowed on, on the message board at the high school?
Yes, well, if it followed this policy, yep. It could. Yeah, and that message board is over, I think it's over a hundred feet from the building. I'd have to go check, but it's got to be over.
How does that apply to scoreboards?
The scoreboards aren't at the schools, they're-
Your school property.
Well, right, but-
What does that?
Well, a hundred feet would be-
So within a hundred feet of a school, not a school property. So, you know, the field is not a school.
Right, and inside would be inside the building, so you don't have-
There's no traffic issues.
There's no traffic issue, so it's just if it's outside. Is that what you meant, Howard?
Uh huh. Any other questions on this? For those watching, as always, I'll try to explain the way policies work in the school district is that they always come to the school board twice. The first time is what we call a first reading, no action is taken on the policy. We simply read it and see if we have any questions on it. If then needs to come back on the next board meeting for what's called a second reading, at which time it can be adopted. So this is only the first reading. It means we're just looking at it and talking about it. If there are any questions on this policy or comments, feel free to bring those up at this time or at a later date with members of the Policy Committee or the superintendent and those can be addressed and then it will come back to us next month to, to be voted on. All right, any further discussion on this policy? All right, hearing none, we'll move on then to item eight from the Finance Committee. You have the minutes in front of you from the August eighteenth meeting. Are there any comments that would like to be made by the Finance Committee before we move into the, the items to be reviewed?
No, I think the-
You're good, we'll just move on to them.
The first like side and then we discuss.
All right, in that case then we'll move item, to item eight B two, which is the Minnesota State Academies' Main Stream Agreement. Superintendent Sesker, would you like to tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, and actually I think I'm going to have Colleen Murdestoff come up, if you don't mind agreeing to explain it.
Good evening. This is a contract that we do every year with the Minnesota State Academies. And what it allows us to do, and the academies to do, is, excuse me, it allows our students to attend classes up there tuition-free and it allows their students to attend classes at Faribault High School or Faribault Middle School tuition-free. Every other district in the state of Minnesota that sends kids to MSAD or MSAB does have to pay tuition for that, but because of our physical location, we have this tuition agreement that allows us to let our students go to each other's sites for educational purposes and not have to pay tuition.
All right, thank you, Colleen. Any, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agreement at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Next, item eight B three, Minnesota State University-Mankato Teaching Fellows Agreement. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to walk us through that?
Yep, this is an agreement and there are eight schools with what's called a professional development school around the Mankato area and we work directly with MSU for this program and other programs. This particular program allows us to employ fully licensed teachers in our school district at a very reasonable rate. The other part of the rate is picked up by Minnesota State-Mankato. But for $28,000, basically, we get two teachers. And what happens then is that two of our other veteran teachers are freed up to do some other work. And in this case, we're using them as intervention specialists, reading intervention specialists K three for the schools. That's at halftime. Then the other halftime, those two teachers that are, that are going to be the reading interventionists will get to go to Mankato State University and work on research and other staff members that are in same situations and bring back that information back to our, our public school system. So this is a great deal for the school district. It's actually $29,178, but for that dollar amount, we get two full-time teachers.
They tend to be new teachers, beginning teachers?
Normally, they are new teachers. That's correct. The challenge, of course, is a lot of teachers want full-time jobs, so how do you get teachers to, that are already certified to come into our classrooms? And we've been really fortunate enough to get some of those new teachers that want to get some experience that may not have been able to get jobs somewhere else, but have some good experience in our quality teachers to teach in our school for a year. Then we can evaluate them and, and move them along. In fact, we have a lot of, a number of our staff who are currently teaching with us have gone through this program, so we've actually hired them.
And do these teachers that come in, can they, are they allowed to or do they participate in a mentor, any kind of mentorship?
They do. They're part of our mentor-mentee program. It's a nice relationship with not just Mankato, but all the other high, our public schools within that area.
Certainly in an area where we can use assistance in our elementary schools.
Excellent. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve it this time.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, please?
Note of clarification, I can vote on this. I've retired from Minnesota State University-Mankato and now at a different institution, so there is no conflict of interest.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're up to Northfield Public Schools Autism Consultant. Again, Superintendent Sesker, would you like to walk us through that a little bit?
You bet. And I'm going to use Cheryl Hall's expertise for this one, so if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have Cheryl explain it.
Good evening. It is just a renewal of our agreement with Northfield Public Schools that we've had for several years. We share the autism consultant between Northfield Public Schools-Faribault and the State Academies.
I'll entertain a motion to approve and then open up discussion. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? This is not new, right?
No, it's just a renewal.
Any questions or comments on this item? Right, hearing, yes, please.
Is this a fifty-fifty arrangement?
It is. We purchase four tenths of the position from Northfield and the State Academies, they, they purchase a portion as well, two days, so about, or a day and a half, so about two point two five.
Is that based on number of students or?
It is, it is. It's based on the number of students. We have, between all three programs, we have the most students in Faribault on the, on the autism spectrum. And Deb Peters, who is the Autism Consultant, she also works with students that are in our severe, profound programs as well. Many of those students have multiple disabilities. They might have a cognitive disability as well as, as autism. So those kids are really, really complex and she helps with them as well. And she helps with consulting with the teachers, helps with implementing and keeping teachers up to date on the latest programs and the latest materials and strategies to work with our students.
All right. Any further discussion on this item? Did we do a motion and a second? All right, all, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all again. Next up is item eight B five, activities additions. Kathy, you want to come forward and tell us a little bit about these?
Do you want to move through them one at a time or I'll?
I'll leave that to your discretion to, why don't you go ahead and go through all of them and then we can open that up to discussion.
All right, basically you have in front of you four possible additions, four, four requests as far as activities is concerned. The first one is, is to, to have Faribault High Schools sponsor a speech team again. Speech as a, as a, an after-school activity was cut probably eleven or twelve years ago now. Even with the addition of, of Northfield and Red Wing in the Big Nine Conference, we are the only school in the Big Nine Conference that does not offer speech as an academic activity. Similar to, I, I think similar in some ways to what has happened with the, the TRAP team program and the number of kids that have gotten involved who were not involved in other activities in, in the school. This is an activity that would open up the opportunity for kids to represent Faribault High School that probably aren't involved in other things, but also would involve some that obviously are involved in other things. It's a, a great activity. It is a State High School League-sponsored activity and because it is something that the Big Nine Conference does have a conference championship in, it's, it's a, you know, an academic activity that we think would be worthwhile to add. Okay, so that's, yes, Todd?
On, on the information sheet here, there's a mention of a class category C contract. Can, could you briefly explain the, the different categories? And my reason for asking is I do not, I'm not sure how long the speech season is. And I'm looking at the salary for speech as compared to assistant coaches and so, and athletic things and I'm wondering how that works.
Well, basically, the, the, what I did was I went back to the two thousand three, two thousand five teachers contract was the last time that speech was included in the teaching contract. There, I mean, it's, it's in the, it's in the category C, part of the contract with all of the coaching positions. And so I, in, in trying to determine what we would pay the speech teacher or speech coach at this time, I took the, the coaching salary for speech in two thousand five and the coaching salary for, for instance, football in two thousand five, compared that to where we are at in football at this time and then I moved speech up percentage-wise the same amount, which is what would have happened if it had stayed in the contract all those years. And so that's, that's why we have that as the-
No, no, I understand that part. What I'm, how, do you know the length of a speech season, for example?
I'm not exactly sure, no, I'm not.
Okay, and my-
We haven't had it for a while, so.
My curiosity arises from personal experience, a number of years in which non-athletic activities were compensated considerably less than athletic activities without, in twenty years of trying, I didn't get a good explanation of that. And I value the, the idea of a speech, you know, I taught speech for several, or several years at the, at the junior high at that time and I think it's a vital life skill, so I'm all in favor of it. My concern is that it be treated equitably and that hasn't always been the case in public schools.
And, and I, I guess I'm open to anything that you have to suggest. Obviously, it would be something that would have to be, be negotiated because I'm working off of what was negotiated.
I understand, and I, I have no knowledge of, of how that compares. My question about how long the season is now and how much that involves, but it could involve a significant, it could involve a significant number of students and a significant time commitment and to me, that just seems like a pay equity issue.
Okay. I'm just looking at the State High School League and the state tournament for speech is April seventeenth through the eighteenth and I think they start in January. Right around there, so that's about the season length, it's about four months, yeah.
So just in looking at the other coaches line, varsity assistant coaches for soccer, which I'm estimating to be an eight or nine-week season, is that fair?
I, basically, we pay based on what the potential season is through, through the state tournament because, you know, a soccer season, if I, if I remember correctly, is fourteen weeks long, twelve or fourteen weeks long. All of the seasons vary, but-
No, I, no, I understand it. I'm, I'm, I'm working, I'm, I'm putting you on the spot by asking you to questions that you, you wouldn't normally have at the, at your, the tip of your tongue, but-
So, so is a speech season similar to a soccer season in length? Yes. Probably is. You know, they're, they're-
Four months?
Part.
Four months.
I'm just guessing. It could be February through April. I just know that April is the state tournament time, so.
Just, I raise it as a point of information, a point of inquiry and as a longstanding concern of mine in how we deal with our activities because I know there is a value, a profound value in our students participating and attracting and keeping quality coaches and compensating them fairly is not on, I don't see that on basis as academic versus athletic.
Right.
And I, and I guess I would agree. And, you know, should this pass, I'm sure Mr. Born would be willing to sit down with us and, and talk about what would be fair compensation.
I would count on it.
In negotiations.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if it'd be possible to respond to some of Mr. Casper's questions. Nicole, do you have any idea what other category or what other activities are in category C in the contract? This is a comparison.
In category, well, there's category one, two, and three, so I'm assuming you're referring to category C. There's golf, tennis, and a label to pressure. Those are only three things, category three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item?
Yes, please.
Okay, the next item that I have in front of you is, is looking at the addition of, of a few coaching positions that we have not had before. In the case of both boys and girls soccer, we have essentially one coach per team. So we've got one coach for the Varski team, one coach for the JV team and one coach for the C team. It is the only, the only activity that we, only team activity like that that only has one coach. You have a good number of kids involved and, and to be able to handle that number of kids, we feel that we need to add another coach to the varsity soccer program. I also have an additional coach for cross-country. Now that one is not designated as for boys or girls cross-country. We're not asking for one for both or, or two, two separate coaches. We're asking for one to be shared between the two programs. Cross-country, you know, we, we have two coaches in cross-country right now who have done a great job of recruiting kids, getting kids out, but they have reached a point where, when they, when they have that many kids together, and right now we run our cross-country program as a seventh through twelfth grade program, asking the, the coach to kind of spread themselves out between where maybe some beginning seventh graders are running and then some senior, senior athletes are running. It gets to be an awful lot to try to, to monitor what's going on there. So those are three additional coaching positions that we would be adding to the, the contract right now. Questions on those?
So this says new coaches at a cost of about seventy-seven hundred, which I assume is four thousand plus thirty-seven hundred, except for if I understand this right, it's meant to be two coaches for soccer, so it would actually be twice that thirty-seven hundred, is that?
No, no, the, the-
Or is that one coach for?
Wait, yeah, that's correct.
So, so this says new coaches and it says that amount for new coaches is seventy-seven hundred or so. Then it says varsity coaches for boys and girls, so I assume that means two coaches-
Yes.
At thirty-seven hundred each?
Yep.
Okay, and then the cross-country is, is four thousand, okay? So, so to my mind, it, I think what happened here is we took four thousand and we added thirty-seven hundred to get seventy-seven hundred, but really we needed to add thirty-seven hundred twice because you're asking for two coaches.
And the physics professor would catch that, yeah, my mistake.
Just, just so I understand, okay, thank you.
Anything else on that? Okay, adding back coaches. Since I've, since I've been in this job the past eleven, twelve years now, we pretty much spent our time cutting and, and we are in a situation where I would like to see us add back some of the positions that we have cut, basically at the, at the ninth grade level. We have too many times situations where our, our ninth graders, our, our ninth grade coaches are overloaded and so kids at that age who have come from our middle school program where we have two teams, now we're down to the, the high school where we may have one team and we've still got a lot of kids there, they, they do not get the help or the opportunity that, that they deserve and that would help our programs hopefully be successful. So in, in this case, we're, we're looking at coaches in football wrestling, boys and girls basketball, fast pitch in baseball. Now, in some cases, we don't, we won't need that coach right now. We know that, for instance, in girls basketball, that our numbers will not be such that we will need that coach this year. But I would like those positions in the contract so that when the numbers are back to where we hope they will be with the, the coaches that we have in place right now, that we'll be able to fill that position as, as it becomes necessary. Questions on that? Okay, and the fourth one is to, you know, we have, I think my first year as A D, when I first took the position, I took the position in January and I was immediately told that I had to find a hundred thousand dollars to cut. That got cut, brought down to eighty thousand dollars, but- That got cut, brought down to eighty thousand dollars, but, uh, one of the programs that we had had struggling, uh, greatly at that time was cheerleading, and, uh, so we, we ended up cutting cheerleading. Now, uh, not having cheerleading is not an unusual thing in the Big Nine Conference. Um, there are, uh, several schools in the Big Nine that do not have cheerleading at this time. I do believe that as far as school spirit, as far as getting kids excited about being at Faribault High School, um, having cheerleaders can be a great benefit. All I, I, all I'm asking for right now is an opportunity to bring back fall sideline cheerleading, um, not in the, not the entire year, but, uh, I would like to see us, uh, see what we can do with that, see, uh, what kind of benefit there is, and, and hopefully whether, uh, hopefully we'll see, um, a, basically, something good happen. You know, schools that have a quality dance team, as we do, uh, many times have a difficult time having, uh, having much for cheerleading, and that may still be true, but, uh, it's still something that I would like to see us, uh, try to move forward with, try to see us, uh, increase our school spirit and increase, uh, the pride in the school among the kids. So, those are the four items.
Ken, is there any concern that, um, uh, you mentioned that cheerleading is often a struggle when there's a strong dance team, as we've had in Faribault for many years now? Uh, i- is there any concern that, that having a cheerleading turn, team could detract from our dance team and, and could, could, uh, create challenges for them that are not there currently? I don't know if that's a realistic concern or not, I just ask it, wondering if that's, since those two clearly have some shared athletes, uh, I don't know if their seasons, how well their seasons overlap and that sort of thing, if, if there's a concern, if there would be a concern in part of those who are so heavily involved in dance in this community that, that, that it might have that effect.
That's true with every program we add.
Sure.
To be quite honest, adding soccer, uh, has, has affected, um, you know, the, the other girl sports that we have in the fall. But you, you hope that with the addition of cheerleading, you, you have enough girls there, uh, and possibly guys, that would be interested in, in that kind of an activity, that, uh, we'd be able to do that and still remain successful with our other programs. Again, looking at, hopefully, opening it up to another group of kids as far as being involved in that, in an activity at the high school.
Thank you.
Two questions, Ken, um, as you take a look at adding new coaches and assistant, adding back coaches.
Yeah.
What criteria do you use? I think you're just sitting in your room and say, I think we should add some more coaches. You obviously have some very specific criteria that you use. I think it's important for the public to know what that criteria is as we're adding to our budget, so if you can explain that, I'd appreciate it.
Basically, I, I, I mean, a lot of it is, is opportunity for the kids, making sure that they, they have the opportunity to, to, uh, receive coaching, uh, as, as we would like them to receive it, and then, uh, you know, the safety issues. And I, you know, I coach swimming, um, I can actually handle a good number of girls or boys during a boys' season in the pool, because we're really condensed and limited, and we're, we're in a tight space and we can watch over all of them. When you talk about being out on a, on a baseball field or out on a soccer field, uh, and you get those kids spread out all over the place, to be able to, to work with those kids and to be able to make sure that, that, uh, the, the situation for them is a safe situation, um, we, you know, if numbers, uh, demand it, then I, I feel we need to provide that.
Thank you. Second question is, are you gonna be able to fill these positions?
Well, I.
Should they be approved?
Uh, honestly, I, I believe we can, yeah. I, I think we have people in place, uh, and available, uh, to do that. That being said, I, I do need, as long as this is on TV, I do need a head gymnastics and assistant gymnastics coach. Unfortunately, our gymnastics coaches have stepped down, and so we, we need to replace them as quickly as we can, so, but. Okay, any other questions?
Uh, just going through the numbers a little bit, Ken, I did some of my own calculating, I think over the last three years.
I don't know what I was doing when I was doing that there.
Yeah, you're right.
I apologize for that.
When I looked at soccer and, and football and volleyball, uh, not so much girls basketball, but some of the other sports, the activities have increased by almost, and if you add in speech and you, I mean, if you just estimate thirty kids in speech, you're at about sixty to seventy-five new participants in these programs. So, that in itself tells me, we still, we always want to make it, make sure it's safe, and the best way to do that is hire extra staff. So there are more kids doing these things too, and I think that's important for the public to know.
And, and I know you're, you're well aware of this, but the, the connection to the school for those kids and what it can do for their, their pride and their academics is, is huge, and that's, that's why, you know, I, I think the most amazing program that's been added in the past couple of years is, is that trap team, and, because we really did attract a whole group of kids that now walk around with Faribault High School, uh, on, on their, you know, shirts on, on during the school day, that, you know, they take a lot of pride in what they're doing, and, and that's, that's a really great thing.
Amen.
So what would the total dollar amount be?
It'd be approximately forty-four thousand dollars, yep.
And is that factoring in the cheerleading for a full year or part of the year?
Oh, that's a good question.
Yeah, and, and the cheerleading is something that we, we need to sit down with and, and come to a, uh, an agreement hopefully with, with the union. Right now, the, the cheerleading as it was done, the, the salary that was there was for the full year, football and, uh, basketball seasons. You know, we, we would hope that we could work something out with them to be able to just pay for the, the fall sideline.
And that was the issue of the finance committee, I think the members that had questions was around that amount, and that it should be prorated based on the season.
Ken, on the cheerleading, you're going to encourage, uh, guys to participate?
Why not? I, I mean, it's, it'll be open for everybody, I mean, obviously, that creates different uniform issues, they're not gonna like the skirts, so.
Are you interested, Richard?
I will, I will, if you do it. We can be the bottom of the, where's, where are you talking?
They're in the bottom.
It's time for a gap. Let's make this meeting back to order.
All right.
I'm going to approve.
Second. Motion to approve in the second. Any further discussion on this item?
I think it's very, the ninth grade coaches, Ken didn't speak to it today, but we talked about it, the finance committee with that group, sometimes you lose kids because you don't have enough coaches at that point, so it's nice to add back and be able to capture those kids that are struggling a little bit, so they continue in the sport.
I think Ken said it very well, how important these activities are to our, our schools, you know. This morning, in, as I was talking to staff about a, a related but separate issue, uh, you know, I said, we don't have football in this district, just because football is such a great sport, we have it because of the connections it builds for the students, the teamwork that they lose, and the connections that they get to their school and to the community, um, there are enormous benefits to these programs that go well beyond simply playing a sport, so, um, uh, a great value in all of these programs, and the more kids we can have involved, the better. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, uh, thank you all. This brings us to, um, item eight C. Give me just one second. All right, um, we have, uh, no enrollment this, uh, report, uh, this evening, I'm certain we'll have our first one at the next meeting. No report on, on financials, uh, at this meeting, um, again, I'm sure there will be one at the next meeting as the, uh, school year begins. We do have a few donations, um, so we'll need to act on those at this time. Uh, I'll read all of those off, and then we can act on them all, all in one action. They start with St. John's Abbey Justice and Peace Committee, uh, which donated two hundred dollars, um, an expression of thanks and support for Cass' valuable work, was that to the Cass program in specific? Or?
Yes.
To the district?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. The Faribault Middle School PTO in the amount of, uh, eighteen hundred and forty-nine dollars and eight cents, uh, for some picnic tables, for student outdoor patio area, and fifteen hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy cents, uh, for field trip bus, uh, reimbursement. And finally, Tammy Bauer, um, a five dollar thank you for assembling care from, from baby stock. So, uh, for all of these items, uh, big and small, we thank the community for stepping forward, uh, at, at any time, um, the community steps forward and supports our schools in, in all manners, uh, we appreciate it greatly, um, and so we thank you for those, and I will entertain a motion, uh, to approve these items.
So moved.
Sent.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Bringing us to item nine, uh, this is, uh, um, the insurance committee, uh, nine A, there is no, uh, report this evening, the wellness committee has no report this evening, uh, community ed, Anne Marie is listed here, but I do not see her in the audience.
No, she could not make it tonight, so she'll save her report for the next time.
So we'll save her report for the next meeting. Okay, uh, bringing us to item ten, other matters, uh, so beginning with the Faribault Growth and Development Plan, uh, we discussed this at our, our work session at some, some length, um, this is the, um, growth and development plan for, uh, teaching staff within the district, um, uh, many people would think of this as the teacher evaluation program that we have that ensures that all of our teachers are receiving an evaluation every three years, um, uh, to, to ensure that they're all receiving feedback, to help them become, uh, the best professionals that they can be. So, uh, do you want to say anything more about that at this time, or Colleen, do you want to say anything about this, this time?
Well, I can, I'll probably have Colleen come up for questions about the plan specifically, but I'll give thanks to, um, our staff, particularly John Bellingham and, uh, Colleen Cardenudo for helping this plan develop and be, uh, in front of you today. I think it's a good plan, it's solid, it's better than the state's plan, which I'm happy to say, and, uh, like I said, it's been a collaborative effort between the, uh, teachers and, um, Colleen and the principals and, and others, so with that, I, if you have questions about the plan, feel free to ask Colleen.
Yes, please. I just have one follow-up question from the work session, Colleen, uh, the role of the principals in this whole process, what, was that discussed in any further detail? Or what was the outcome of that, or is that something that'll be considered in the future?
Well, the original role is that they're the, they are the summative evaluator in year three. I know that you wanted to have some discussion on observation and et cetera, that will, that will follow up as we roll out the plan. We will review the plan all along the way, but that's a, that's a piece of it that I have already brought up to John, to be honest with you, so, um, that's more, that would be more to come.
Thank you.
Would you mind, Colleen, just giving a brief summary for anybody who might be watching of, of how this, uh, plan came about, what was the, the timeframe over which, uh, this happened, and how many people worked on this, who, who has worked on this plan?
We, um, we've been working on this plan for approximately two years, and we've had a committee of our teaching staff, our administrators, um, I'm trying to think, special ed director, so it, it, and, and a representative, obviously, from, from our union, and so we have been working together closely with all these people, there's about twenty people on the committee, working very closely together with, um, several meetings throughout the school year. I would say we had at least six to seven within the last, uh, last year and a half, and, uh, the committee's been working really hard to make some changes. It is by law a collaborative plan, and so that we need to work together to, to design the plan and to roll out the plan, and, uh, really have worked really well together with that. The teachers, um, teaching staff themselves has to come up with three different goals, they have a targeted goal that targets a certain population, they have a class goal that targets the whole classes as a whole, and they have a school or what they call a shared performance goal that they need to develop and show data on. It was really done in collaboration with each other, and so a pretty strong plan, we do believe, however, knowing that it is in its first year, we know we're gonna need to make changes along the way.
Colleen, did we have a written plan before?
No, I don't believe so.
So this is the first time you've ever written?
This is the first time that I believe there's been a written plan, yes.
How, uh, how might students notice the difference this year?
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, I know that with this plan, our staff, obviously, we'll be using a lot more data and taking a look at, you know, where did our students start and how do they grow? And so, um, I think the students, I think there might be conversations about, here's where you started, kind of giving students kind of a goal as to reach. I know that some of our staff already does that, but I think that would extend to all staff members. They're gonna want to encourage their students to, to grow and to develop in, in all areas, and so they might be more apt to share the data that they started with and, um, have the conversations about where those kids are headed.
Yeah, one thing kind of jumped out at me was it looked like, uh, the teachers would set goals or with the students, set goals for the students?
They, they don't necessarily set goals with the students, they set goals for the students, however, you know, if I was teaching, I would definitely start out by saying, okay, here's, here's my pre-assessment, here's where we all started, here's where I want everyone to grow, grow to, so I would involve the students in that aspect. The most important piece to this is that, really, that we're growing kids, and that's what our staff is looking at, where did they start, how many kids did we grow, and, and how can we continue to grow them?
And how do you see the statistics being used at the end of the year?
Well, in a variety of ways, um, first of all, a teacher reflecting on their practice for starters, uh, they, they'll be able to look at, they'll be, they'll create their goals, and if they don't reach their goals, they're gonna have to ask the question is, why didn't we reach the goals? What might I need? What resources might I need? Might I need more training in this area, or, or can I go and talk to a, a, another teacher and make observations so that I can continue to, to grow more of my students? You might want to look at curriculum, I mean, there's a variety of things that, that you can look at, take a look and see, did my curriculum cover really what I needed it to cover to grow these kids? And so, um, it will just really open their eyes to, to a variety of things, teaching, instruction, instructional practices, did my practice lead those students to where they need to go? It really kind of gives the teacher a chance to reflect with the help of others, because you have your, obviously, your principals helping, but you also have your own peers that are gonna be helping you all along this process, and it will probably cause a lot of positive conversations amongst our PLCs, uh, groups, because I, I'm assuming that in some cases, they'll have some common goals with common assessments, and so, um, it will really, I think, develop, it will open up communications and develop a stronger PLC and collaboration, not just amongst our staff, but amongst our staff and our administration together as a whole, to move in one direction.
Could, I, I believe you, you hinted at it, and, and I'm not sure that I heard correctly what Chairman Enbryk said earlier, but it is my understanding that, uh, tenured teachers and non-tenured teachers can expect to be evaluated in one way or another every year.
Correct, the year in the non-tenured, or in the non-tenured staff, obviously, we will be evaluating them.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Through the Charlotte Danielson model. The tenured staff, um, you know, will have a group that's in year one, and they'll be monitored and evaluated with their peers, and year two, the same thing, but year three, whatever year they happen to be in, year three is the summative evaluator, they evaluator year. We will start some of our, uh, more seasoned staff in year three this year.
I understand.
Because we have to divide.
Well, I just wanted to be clear, I was understanding what was, it was in the plan, and I wanted the people at home to understand as well, that this is a growth and development plan, and it does get teachers involved every year with an evaluation, twice by their peers, uh, and, and then the third year would be the, the administrative evaluation.
It also.
And I'm, I'm saying that as a, a retired teacher, in which I had to beg for an evaluation the last twenty-five years of my career.
Most teachers are gonna be, most teachers will welcome the evaluation, they want to know how they're doing, they want to know how to improve, that's, that's just natural.
As a former teacher, I see a lot of positives in this in terms of growth and development, and, uh, the, the collaborative effort that you described earlier was, is, I think, exactly the way it should have been done, and, um, and I like the public to. and I'd like the public to be assured that this is a strong process to help our teachers be better.
I would agree. It's an exciting time, I'll have to be honest with you.
Colleen, I just want to say, you know, I said at the work session, and I want to repeat now, that I think this is one of the most important things, you know, perhaps because it's on other matters in the agenda, or it doesn't seem as flashy, and doesn't involve enormous amounts of money, that this might get glossed over in the community. But I would put this in one of the top five, if not higher, of things that have happened since I've been on the board. Like I said in the work session, I think it's hard to overstate how important this is. One of my frustrations when I joined the board, and I think this shocked many people in the community, because I heard it from teachers like Tom Was and others, that there was a frustration that teachers weren't getting evaluated, and that frustration was as much from teachers and the union as it was from community members and others. For all sorts of reasons, that evaluations are a good thing to be happening. And I just want to commend you and commend Todd as well, because I have felt very much like it's since your leadership has come to the district that this conversation has really moved forward, and that I've seen progress on this, because I believe this progress is so important. I think this is culmination of sort of the first stage of this, and then, as you have said, it is our first year doing this, it's going to be of this particular plan. We've been sort of working towards this, I know. But it's our first year with this plan written down and in place. There'll be some learning, and I expect this will be evaluated itself, and we'll be growing from this. But the fact that it's now in place and that all of our staff can count on getting feedback on what they're doing every year is huge, and I commend you on that, and all those who worked on this. And it's a privilege for me to be able to take action on it tonight. I've wanted to be able to take action on an item like this for about six years, so I'm excited that we're able to do it this evening.
I would like to really, though, I really do need to give credit to John Bellingham, who actually worked at the state level at MDE to help develop a statewide plan. And fortunately, he was part of that committee that really brought in ideas and thoughts, and, you know, he was able to see what other districts were doing in the process itself. So, I really have to give credit to John, to be honest with you. So I want to make sure I do that. Thank you.
Other questions?
It'll be good to know a year from now, what went well and what didn't go so well. And also, how much time it took.
Yes, there is a little bit of that nervousness right now, to be honest with you, about the time factor, but, you know, it's something, like you said, we'll continue to develop and make changes as needed.
Any further questions on this item? I do not believe we've had a motion in our second, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the Faribault Growth and Development Plan at this time.
I consider it a privilege to move, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Thank you all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you all very much for our thoughtful consideration of this very important. Next is the approval of the police liaison contract.
Nope.
Memorandum of agreement.
Yep, right after that one, there is another memorandum for the agreement.
A piece of paper that's sitting here, coming out.
I see.
And that was blank before, and we just finished it up today, so we need to just discuss it and talk about it, and then if you, actually, we do have as an action item.
Is it on, I don't see it on my agenda, but?
On Board Book, it's under other matters, right under it, it says attachment. I think it was supposed to be part of the.
Oh, I see, it's just part of the same thing, I see, now I see it here, okay, thank you all. For the moment, my computer went quiet and I didn't see it, I appreciate that. All right, so next we have the memorandum of agreement between the Faribault Education Association and the Independent School District, which, what Superintendent Sescer, do you want to tell us what this memorandum is?
You bet, this is the agreement that we've been working on for the use of the one-time revenue that we received from the state of Minnesota to implement the Growth and Development Evaluation Plan. And so, for the last week, Nicole and Colleen, and both Colleens, actually, have been working hard to figure out a way to spend these monies to get our resources out there so that we can implement this plan and move forward with it. So, as you read through the plan, the basic understanding is that we're going to hire staff to help us implement this in each of the buildings. If you turn to the back of that page, we would have a Growth and Development Coach in each of those buildings. You can see the middle school has two, high school has two, and then the CRE, CALC, and again, they have two, obviously, because they're larger numbers. These coaches would be paid eight thousand dollars. Nicole can talk a little bit about the job description for that. Colleen Murdestorff can talk to you about the funding, where that's coming from, and Colleen Cardenudo can certainly chime in too, to talk about the strategies on how we're going to implement those things. This is something that we've been working on, but we were not able to get to you till today. But we felt that we needed to, obviously, this whole structure's come pretty quickly because of the legislation. We needed to get this out there. But we're pretty comfortable with the plan too, and it's been a collaborative effort with, obviously, both the union and the administration. So, with that, if you don't mind, maybe I'll bring Nicole up. Well, actually, if all three of you want to come up and talk about it, that would be great. So if you have questions for them, go ahead.
Maybe I'll address the funding piece first. As the legislature was working through this process of developing the law around evaluating staff, they realized that that comes with a cost, but they weren't so sure that they would be able to fund it ongoing, so they do have one-year money available for the fourteen, fifteen school year, and it's three hundred dollars per FTE, so basically, three hundred dollars per teacher. And for us, we have about three hundred teachers or three hundred FTEs in the district, so that's about ninety thousand dollars that we'll have available to use to help implement this growth and development model. Now, they've said that this is one-time money, but they've also said that depending on how the year goes, and as they evaluate it and look at this, that there is the potential that this would be ongoing. But at this point, it is just one-time money for fourteen, fifteen. So that's where the revenue is coming from to support these positions.
Can we expect that there'll be another discussion next year, depending upon the outcome of the next legislative session?
I would expect that this might be taken up. Is there a report that's due in January or February on this?
They haven't come out with one yet, but I'm sure they're probably going to gather that from MDE, yes.
What are we going to do if the state doesn't pony up the money? Then what do we do then?
As I understand it, this memorandum of understanding is just a one-year, these are one-year positions. So, you know, if we implement this model, and the coaches maybe are needed for one year to get it up and off the ground, a lot of times, it just takes some extra effort to get everybody trained on how to set goals and do the, implement the plan. So hopefully, the tasks may be one-year tasks also.
How did you arrive at eight thousand dollars?
I'm going to let Nicole address that.
Good evening. We put together a job description based on the, what the law says we can do with these funds, and based on what we also envision these coaches to be doing as part of their responsibilities. We put that into our job description software. Our job description software establishes a point range, and we really looked at this, these individuals in comparison to an athletic coach. Looking at it like an athletic coach, they get roughly fifty-seven, fifty-eight hundred dollars for a season. This individual, now, we could justify an eight thousand dollar salary compensation because they will be expected to work all year long. It could be all one hundred and eighty-five days, depending on how much support is needed at each building level. We also took it in comparison to a six-fifths contract, which, what that is, is it's when a teacher gives up their prep period every single day, so they're essentially paid one-fifth of their salary for giving up their prep period every day, all day. And looking at that, that would generally be about a twelve thousand dollar extra compensation for a teacher to do that. Now, we didn't think this position was quite equivalent to a six-fifths contract, because they wouldn't necessarily be giving up their prep period every single day. They may be working with other teachers every day, or most days, from seven-thirty to eight, and also from three to three-thirty, and as needed during their prep period. So we fell, we tried to fall right in the middle of an athletic head coach and a six-fifths contract.
So you already have anything to do with this, or not?
It does not. When we post the positions, we do have a few requirements. One is that they must have a teacher's license. The other one is that they must.
Preferably have been on that committee.
Right, they would, the preference will be given to an individual who is part of the teacher evaluation committee. And, and they must have a prep period. Really, that's all. Otherwise, we'll have other things in there, like we'll prefer that they have coordination and scheduling abilities and so forth. Basic, basic abilities to work with individuals.
All of these coaches interact with each other, so they learn from each other.
We did have a lot of conversation about that, and we did discuss potentially putting together something like a Growth and Development Coach PLC, so we can pull them together from each building and work together and come up with strategies and templates to share between each other. So we did have a lot of discussion about that, that is a priority for us.
Is there any formal training for them?
Yes, by law, there will be. Training for them, they need to, they'll, they will need to attend a training on peer coaching, and hopefully, we'll be doing that relatively soon if we can get this passed.
These will be staff, our staff, right?
Our staff, our staff in each of our buildings.
Okay, so there's another cost for substitute for their classroom while they're doing this, is that right?
And now, the thought is, is that they would, well, in some incidents, yeah, that could possibly happen, but we're looking at the seven-thirty, seven, or seven to seven-thirty time, the three to three-thirty time, and sometimes, you know, obviously, beyond the workday, if a staff member is willing to be with them.
But it'll be non-instructional time that they'll be working with faculty?
However, there might be times where we might feel that there is a need for a teacher to go in for an observation, and we might have to do some sub-days. I just want to make sure you know that.
When we established these rates of pay, we did take that into consideration. Looking at these different positions, it equals about seventy-two thousand dollars, so it doesn't take up the full ninety thousand. So we did back off money for subs and materials and supplies and training.
Now, when an athletic coach gets paid to do the coaching, they do a lot of that after school?
Yes, that's correct.
And we're kind of basing this off of athletic coaches paid?
We're using that as one of the benchmarks, yes.
So are these coaches expected, I mean, is that part of the agreement, that they're going to work after hours?
It could be, yes. Our expectation, and we did visit with the FEA, is if one of their teachers need to visit with them until five o'clock at night, we would expect them to not get up and leave at three-thirty, because their peers in support, in need of support.
Now, you kind of hope it isn't just paying an extra eight thousand dollars for putting in the same work day they did before?
Right. We do have a good list for our job expectations, yes. And really, it will, they'll be doing a disservice to their team members if they're not fulfilling those job duties. We're really working closely with the FEA also on the selection of who will be doing these, who will be responsible for the coaching at each building level, because we really want them to bring forward their staff members that they're comfortable working with, and they're comfortable confiding in if need be, and going.
With the emphasis of those that worked on the community, I mean, they, we really, we do want to give preference to those people, because they have put a lot of time and energy into the plan itself and really understand it, so we are encouraging that also.
Your chair, under Part Two of this memorandum of agreement, this is for one year, but it also goes on to say, if both parties don't agree to a successor process, you must adopt the state plan. So look in your crystal balls, will we be adopting the state plan in July one of two thousand and fifteen, or will we continue this with some modifications?
I highly doubt that we will be adopting the state plan. The state plan is, shall I say, interesting at best, a lot of jumping, so I don't envision that. That would be something that they would want to do.
And I would hope that they would, thank you.
Just one last comment too, I just want to make sure that they understand that the Growth and Development Coaches will also be a nice conduit to the administrators during this whole process too. So, when they're developing, there's going to be a lot of goals that these teachers are going to be writing, there's going to be three sets that they have to help all the teachers, and this is a brand-new process, get through, and also help the principals continue to evaluate that, because these goals cannot be approved without the principal's consent.
Any further questions on this memorandum?
On the approval of the memorandum of agreement?
We have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Faribault Education Association and Independent School District six-five-six for the teacher development and evaluation. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, now, this brings us to the police liaison contract. Superintendent Sescer, do you want to say a little bit about that?
Sure, the liaison contract, of course, is with our city police department and the school district. We have a police liaison at the high school and one at the middle school, and we contract with them for the amount shown. It's about, I believe it is about a five percent increase in fees and everything else that is there. Again, if you want to ask Colleen about where these funds come from, it's the basic, it's actually the same exact agreement, except for the dollar amount at the bottom that we've had every year. And we get a great, we have a great relationship with our local police department. It's nice to have those police liaisons in our schools. They learn a lot about our kids, and they can do a lot of preemptive forecasting of things that could possibly come, so it's been a nice relationship.
Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, my memory says that we, as a school district, have, are a part of the process of choosing who the police liaisons are, and I'm hoping we use that to ensure that we're getting people with appropriate skills to work with youth the way that we ask them to do, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's correct, I was just looking for it on the, it's in the contract, yes, on, see, where, on the accountability. It goes over the administration of the school district and the city and police department on the collaboration that we have for the hires and how we work with them.
I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the twenty-fourteen, fifteen school liaison agreement. For anybody who might be watching, just to reiterate, this is not a new contract. This is something we've had in place for many years, as long as I remember. Something, update of something we've been doing, a successful program for many years. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And this brings us to other items of information, starting with student representatives. I'm happy to say that we have two student, I think, a second student representative here this evening. So if you guys have anything to share, I would ask that you at least share your names and where you are in school, and that information for anybody who might be watching.
Hi, my name is Emily Remy, I am the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year student council president. I'm also very involved in the girls soccer team. I'm also very involved in the girls soccer team, theater, and a lot of other different things at the high school, so it's really cool to be here and to be able to share my opinions of things with you guys. And I'm, yeah, so, awesome. My name's Emily.
My name is Lauren Warner, and I'm gonna be a junior this year, and I'm also in soccer as well. I also am involved in hockey and softball and a number of other things, like link crew, student council, big brothers, big sisters, and this as well.
I'm going to be a senior, sorry about that.
Thank you, Emily and Lauren, for being here. Anything else you'd like to add from student perspective this evening? Sorry, put you on the spot, maybe we didn't forewarn you. In the future, this, this will always be the moment for you, feel free to shine at that moment. Thank you both for being here, we appreciate that very much. Next, items of information from school board members.
I would just like to thank Ron Levake for his thirty years of service. Wonderful guy.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah, myself, Yvette, and Tom, we attended, what, two, three weeks ago, a discussion on Common Core, this presentation, and they can basically say what, you know, they've heard too, so maybe I'll wait for them to say something, what they learned from it.
I thought it was an interesting presentation, and they had the organization itself as a whole, I wasn't in total agreement with, but they certainly brought up some issues regarding the Common Core, which I think we discussed with the board in the past, and Colleen has brought up, but I wouldn't agree with the organization as a whole and their point of view, but I'm very glad I attended to hear their perspective.
I also found the meeting quite interesting. Lot of questions raised, not as many answers as I think we need to have. It is my hope that our curriculum committee might look at that. I know it's been discussed in the past, but I think the more we can educate ourselves about that. Minnesota is using the reading standard and part of the math standard, if I'm...
Just the reading.
Just the reading standard, okay. And, but I'm interested in hearing some more about that, and as I've said on a number of occasions, I'm interested in making sure that we have a quality, but also a comprehensive program.
Then, I would, did what they said pretty much on that, that with the state of Minnesota, our standards are tougher than Common Core, so that's why the state did not adopt that. Plus, there's one particular item in there, is that with standardized testing, is that, is that Yvette and Tom can verify that, parents can opt out of standardized testing with a form, you know, sign up, whatever, send it in to the district, and they can opt out. There are districts or students or parents that are opting out of standardized testing throughout the state, so...
And I, I'd like to get back to you. I would like to get back to you on that, only in the, in the fact that one of the last meetings that I was at MDE, they stated that if they did not take the assessment, they would not receive a Minnesota diploma. I don't know if that person was speaking out of turn or not, so I do need to find someone who can actually provide me with the accurate answer to that, because I would not like to encourage parents to do that, knowing that might be the consequence to this, so I do need to probably do a follow-up for our next meeting on that.
Great, thank you.
Other items? This morning? Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to mention that as part of my part-time job with the Minnesota Department of Corrections, I was able to attend the Minnesota ABE Adult Basic Ed Conference in St. Cloud last week. I saw several of our district employees there. I found the conference to be very interesting and enlightening. There was a gentleman who was our keynote speaker, who I'll just mention by name and do, has a website, I found terribly impressive, particularly in light of our speaker this morning about the effects of poverty on education. He had a very powerful personal story, his keynote was entitled "From GED to PhD." And so, it was that aspect, but also the chance to rub shoulders with a lot of very fine adult basic educators from across the state, and it was very interesting. And Anne Marie was there, and several others. I'm gonna leave somebody out, shouldn't have started. Anyway...
Jessica Lewis, I think, was there.
It was a great conference.
Anything else? I just wanted to mention that today was the opening meeting for all of our staff here in the district, so the first day that most of our teachers are back in the classroom and doing trainings and getting ready for students to arrive. It was fun to see everybody in the same room this morning, to see the energy that they bring. As I said this morning, that the first day of school, when students arrive, is always the second most exciting day of the year, and I'll just leave it at that. And so, it's an exciting time, and I could feel that in the room, and it was just fun to be in the presence of all of our professionals in this community who work so hard to do their best for our students, and so it was a great day from that perspective, so. Anything else from school board members before I turn it over to the superintendent? Hearing none, Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, been a few, to a few meetings. I went to our Minnesota Department of Education Back to School Workshop and listened to Governor Dayton and Commissioner Casilius speak, and it was a good day all around. They did talk a little bit about Common Core and world's best workforce and what's happening within those pieces. I also went to a workshop within there that talked about how we can work together with our community colleges within our community in a more close relationship. And the example, one of the examples that they use is how Fairbrough is working together with South Central College and the automotive program. So, that was great. The automotive program, by the way, we have worked out, so we will be giving some college credit to those students that are taking the automotive program. We still haven't quite worked out the facility, that's, makes sense, because the facility's not finished over in South Central College, so we'll keep on working on that piece. Met with Dr. Parker as a follow-up with that on the twelfth to further discuss what other things we can do. We talked about creating successful pathways for students. We broke it down into three. They were medical, engineering, and technology pathways that we're gonna be looking at, in addition to the automotive pathways for the future of our relationship with South Central College. Another committee I'm involved in is called SEMNet, that's a technology committee. We get what's called technology education aid from the state of Minnesota. In order to get some of that aid, you have to be part of a consortium. It's a consortium of all the southeast, not all of them, but a lot of the southeast Minnesota schools, and the idea is that we can go out for bids for our internet and other things, and then, as a result of being part of this consortium, we can then write that to get some of the state aid that's designated for the school districts to provide some of these services. So, it's a good system we're working on. One of the things we're thinking, we're looking at, especially in fifteen, sixteen, when we start our one-to-one initiatives with our students, is looking at how we can get access to those students at home, internet access at home. And so, an idea, it's not something that has been formalized, but an idea is that if all the southeast Minnesota school districts work together with a Verizon or an, or AT&amp;T or something like that, is there a grant out there that we can receive so that school districts can pay for this, so that our entire community can have data or internet access for, for their students at home? So, it's a concept right now, but it's something that, as a result of being part of this consortium, we can at least investigate to see if it's possible. I also attended a workshop as my professional development on perseverance and motivation, which I thought was outstanding, and there's a correlation between motivation and success with kids, or perseverance with success for kids. They talked about, back in nineteen eighty-one, when I graduated, I was only required to take one math class and one science class to graduate, for an example, and then, I would argue that back in nineteen eighty-one, the rigor wasn't quite as much as what it is now in two thousand and fourteen. So, the rigor has changed probably twice as much as what rigor was required back when I was in high school, and yet, the motivation, or strategies for motivation that teachers have, hasn't changed. So, we, we haven't changed the motivation, and intrinsic motivation has been proven to show a correlation for success academically through research, but if that motivation hasn't changed, and the rigor and the expectations for students have changed, that's a gap that we have to continue to explore. So, one of the tools that we can use to motivate students, not extrinsically, but figure out a way to do that intrinsically, is technology. Kids that have grown up with it physiologically, they've developed their brains towards it, and now, if we can figure out strategies that we can develop with our staff that can intrinsically motivate students with technology and those tools, that's the purpose of that levy, and that's the purpose of moving this district forward. And so, that's gonna be the strategy this year, is to try to figure out ways that we can do that whole piece. But it was a very good workshop. We have met with auditors and talked about the audit, which is gonna come out here pretty soon, and it, again, is looking nice. Things have been doing very well, and of course, Colleen and Andy and all of your crew have done an excellent, Colleen's crew has done an excellent job of moving that forward. I met with Kathy Sandberg and Becky Ford and Shelley Cole to talk about our chemical health coalition and what we are doing to move forward. We have two counselors that we hired, one at the high school and one at the middle school, that will be designated to create committees for our chemical health coalition, made up of students and staff, to help address the chemical health issues within our county, within Rice County, with the help of the Rice County Family Collaborative and also Rice County itself. So, it's gonna be another way that we can bridge some of the gaps that we have with the county and with the school district to help address some of these issues. We also, I talked on KDHL last week, if you caught the show, I was on KDHL for that time, so I thanked Gordy and the KDHL to give me the opportunity to talk about all the good things that are happening in the school. We had two staff members, Margaret Gare and, thank you, Jamie Benty, our assistant principal at the high school, presented on bowling. They went to a workshop in Rochester with a new bowling legislation to show all the different things that we have to go through in order to make sure that we're in compliance with it. It is a lot of work on top of the growth and development models for the, for the principals. They will also be responsible, the principals and the coordinators of each building, with this new bowling legislation. So, that's gonna be another challenge. We did provide that opportunity of training for administrators. We have now provided the opportunity for training for our staff through some of the modules that we have through what's called Infinite Campus. I actually went through the module today, it is good. It covers most of the information for the bowling that the Minnesota, the new Minnesota statute requires, but we do have to cover a couple more gaps. And finally, the new teacher workshop. Thank you, Jason, for your outstanding presentation again this morning. It was very well received, and throughout the entire day, people were talking about Mr., our chairperson Engbret's presentation, and the work we need to do to create, I would say, a bridge with a diversity community. We have our communities, right now, they're kind of in two separate camps, they're working together, but they're, I don't think they're quite integrated to the point where we really like to see those things. And I think that's true, and I think that was a perfect tone for the speaker that we had today, and I thank you for that presentation, so. Other than that, not much's going on, so, a lot of things, so, it's been a good, good start to the year.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. This brings us to some dates to remember, item twelve. August twenty-fifth, at eight AM, was the Aldisick Beck School Workshop. September second will be our first day of school. September eighth at five-thirty PM will be the next work session for the school board at the district office. September fifteenth will be, at seven-thirty AM, will be the finance meeting at the district office, and September twenty-second at six-thirty PM will be our next regular board meeting right back here in City Hall. So, with that, we are at item thirteen, which is adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
One, one, mention the curriculum meeting again, which is the twenty-second?
The curriculum meeting, yes, thank you. On September twenty-second at four-thirty PM will be the curriculum meeting at the district office. Thank you, Jen. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.